Thank you, Mr. Coxworth. This time I'll call the Cochise County Planning and Commission meeting to order on December fourteenth, regular scheduled meeting, and if you would all please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand.
One nation, under God, in the vision, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I could also ask if everybody please remove their hat, this is a public building, thank you. Point off.
I was gonna do that.
Pardon me? I knew you were gonna do that. At this point I'll have a rule call, it'll do as we have been to the last year or so, through District One, Mr. Pew.
Present.
My name is Mr. Gregan, I'm President, Mr. Montgomery.
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez, District Two. Absent, Mr. Watkins, present, Mr. Young.
Present.
Welcome, Mr. Young. Mr. Marskey.
Present.
Mr. Saunders.
Present.
And Ms. Welsh. Ms. Welsh is absent. Alrighty, we do have a majority, or I should say a quorum, so we can proceed with what we have come here to do this evening. Real quickly, I'd like to rule, read some rules into the records, and they're up on the board. There are a few ground rules here for the welcoming to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's, please turn off your cellphones, or at least silence the ringers, please be polite to other stakeholders, no applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, there's a speaker form in the back of the information, and please fill that out and complete it, and submit it to staff over here for us, we appreciate it. Docket applicants are not required to do this. Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments over here in the minutes. Excuse me, we have a speaker's clock, time limits, five minutes for call of the public, ten minutes for the applicants, five minutes for the supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for the applicant rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six are from unincorporated areas. Commissioner's service is pro bono. The quorum is five commissioners, which we have this evening. Majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. Excuse me, special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals for special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within fifteen days of the commission's approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained at the county website. For assistance, contact the case planner. Other docket decisions, dockets other than special use, request, results, and recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice your disagreement with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with that docket. Thank you very much. And we'll dive into it here, first item on the agenda is approval of the previous month's minutes. At this point I'll ask for motion and any corrections, do we have a motion, please?
I make a motion.
Mr. Saunders, motion, please, thank you, do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Second, Mr. Montgomery. Do we have any questions or corrections on last month's meeting, or last month's minutes, excuse me? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Pew, how do you vote?
Yea.
Mr. Gregan votes yea, Mr. Montgomery?
Yea.
Aye. Aye, Mr. Watkins?
Absent.
Thank you, Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Marskey?
Absent.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes passed unanimously with two abstentions. Robert, if you're listening, I know you will be, get those abstentions. Next item on agenda is the
Yes, Mr. Karen.
Pardon me?
I just said, yes, Mr. Karen.
Pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero one H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter. Responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further, or responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter at a further consideration and decision at a later date. I do not have any, a request for speakers for the open to, for the public, call of the public, do we have any that didn't get in? Are you here to speak on a docket?
I'm here to speak about that.
Okay, well, we haven't got to that yet, we'll just call of the public right now. Alrighty, hearing none, we'll start with the public hearing, we'll start out with docket number, see, let me get my organization back where I need to be. Item number one, general statement is request for special use, I should say, excuse me, docket number SU twenty-two dash two four. Request for special use authorization to operate a small engine repair service business on four point one three acres of land in Hereford, Arizona. The applicant's name is Myron Aller, Arnold, and is Mr. Arnold available, where is he here? He is here, thank you.
I'm here in her place, my name is James Moffett, actually I have to go a minute. Myra had eye surgery and she can't change the visage to.
Okay. Um. I'm gonna kick this to you guys real quick and ask the question, who's the applicant? We have an applicant here of Myra Arnold, excuse me, I apologize, she's not present. So.
He is also a property owner, Ms. Moffett.
Property, okay, so he is, he is also on the application, as listed as a property.
Correct.
Thank you. At this point I will call for the Planning Director's report, Ms. McLaughlin, I do believe that's you.
It is one minute. Good evening, this is a special use request to operate repair services, small engine, on four point one three acres of rural zone developed land in Hereford, Arizona. The property is located eight five six seven East American Dreamway on parcel one oh seven six one zero two five, originally located on the map to the right. It's zoned RU four, there's a house on the property as well as a recently constructed fifteen hundred square foot metal storage structure that's proposed to accommodate the small engine repair if approved by the commission. The applicant is Myra Arnold, who cannot attend tonight, Mr. Tom Moffett, who is here in person, will instead speak on her behalf. Small engine repair is defined as services to repair vehicles with no more than two axles, recreational vehicles and/or other small engines, and may include incidental retail sales. This is the concept plan for the use. The middle building is highlighted in yellow, it's on the southwestern portion of the parcel. Here are some photos of the site, this is the constructed building, it meets all applicable development standards for an accessory use. As I previously mentioned, the parcel is zoned RU four, the area is all RU four. All parcels are at least four acres in size, as you can see on the map on the screen. There's not a lot of vacant parcels, this is an established area, mostly low-density residential. The project supports the goals of the Cochise County Comprehensive Plan, including goals in the economic development and land use elements, and also supports one of the purpose statements of RU four zoning. To encourage those types of non-residential, non-agricultural activities which serve the local needs or provide a service and are compatible with rural living. This business would serve local residents. There are ten factors used to evaluate all special use requests, as submitted, it complies with four, two of which I just mentioned. Development along major streets factor is not applicable, it partially complies with public input, and conditional compliance is possible with the remaining four factors. Starting with public input. Mailed letters were sent to all property owners within five hundred feet, this map shows their response. To date, I've received fourteen responses, written. Three letters of support were from the property owner, not shown on the map. Two additional letters of opposition were received after the requested date. The property was also posted, ad was placed in the Herald. Specifically, the respondents in opposition mentioned noise, traffic, property values, environmental impacts, and concerns about the appropriateness of the commercial use in the area. Response is significant enough to warrant additional consideration by the commission. Per the zoning regulations, if public concerns have been raised, it's fair to ask the applicant to make reasonable effort to address those concerns. Should the commission choose to support the request, staff recommends the commission attach conditions one through five, which are intended to help address neighbor concerns. All conditions recommended by staff within the recommendation section of the report are intended to relate to neighbor concerns. In terms of factors and favors, it's consistent with the goals of the comp plan, the purpose of the zoning district. Neither complies or partially complies with five of the criteria used to evaluate special use requests. Visually, it's not out of character or scale with its surroundings, and this is a small business that would serve area residents. In terms of factors to not support the request, I just mentioned the public input we've received. All written responses I received prior to eleven twenty-three were included in your packets. I do feel the conditions are necessary to mitigate four of the factors used to evaluate special use requests, and finally, although the area is not residentially zoned, it's ruled, it's mostly residentially developed. With that, I'll pause for commission discussion and presentation from the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, I appreciate that. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, hearing none?
No.
Uh. Don't let me forget you, Mr. Young, and I will, I apologize. At this point we'll ask for the applicant's statement, Mr. Moffett, you have ten minutes, if you could please come up to the microphone, state your full name and your address, and present your cases to why and what you're up to.
My name is James Moffett.
Mr. Moffett. You want to talk to us, not to them.
Alright, my name is James Moffett. I am the applicant. The we, we built this building out here, we bought property out there on American Dreamway, me and my, my wife are basically retiring. We had a large business in, in Texas, and we sold it off, and we come out here to pretty much live out our lives, you know, in, in Arizona. The the business that we're, we're talking about is, is not a big business, it's we're working on a few motorcycles in this shop. The, I've, I've read the concerns and everything, and some of them involve power accumulation. We don't have any of those. The, the, we, we really don't have any waste oil. Maybe a couple of gallons a year, but the, I think they take that at the transfer station, though. I mean, we don't dump anything on the property, the, when we bought that property right there, it was completely unmaintained whatsoever. Nobody wanted to buy it. We bought it, and since then, we remodeled the house and everything, put up a new building, cut all the, all the brush, I mean, did everything we could to, to improve, improve the place. The, the, as far as property value goes, the, ours has doubled in the last year because of the improvements that we have made, I think it would be a benefit to everybody because your median value goes up and everybody's value goes down. We, we have no under-registered vehicles at our property, I don't have anybody else's vehicles. The, the, the ones that I work on go in that shop right there. And we don't work on anything out in the yard, I quit that years ago, you couldn't get me to go out in the gravel and work on nothing. I ain't gonna do it. The the, as far, the, one of the concerns was maintaining the road, and I had planned on doing that all along. We've already talked to an outfit for doing it, and they've had the, the electric company come out and mark it out, and the, the phone company to mark their lines and all that, and they're, they're ready to go. I haven't asked any neighbors to pitch in on it. Uh, I mean, I'm willing to do it on my nickel, not just participate, I, I'll do it. We have one of the worst roads in the county, you can't drive down it without your dashboard flopping all over the place, it's like a riverbed. Well, I would hope that everybody would want that to improve, and I had planned on doing that regardless of this right here, whether it's approved or disapproved, I'm fixing that road. The, somebody's gotta do it, and I mean, I don't know what everybody else's trucks cost, but mine cost a lot of money, and I'm not gonna have rattled apart on the rocks, not when it doesn't have to be that way, no. Things are pretty reasonable to get them done around here. The, the, I wanna be a good neighbor to everybody, the, I understand that everybody has concerns, and it's, uh, they should. Something new comes into the neighborhood, then you're gonna have some concerns, but, and the, anything legitimate, the, I'll take care of it, I have no opposition, I have no hate on anybody, the, if they have a concern, I encourage them to bring it to my attention, and we'll resolve it. It's just that simple. The, I'm a pretty quiet person, actually, the, making a little bit of noise right now because I got my tractors running, I'm trying to clean my place up, and I've got, uh, I'm, I'm seeing years of somebody not taking care of the place to take care of, I got my skeets growing everywhere, I'm chopping wood and stuff like that, but I don't do it in nighttime hours, the, I wait until a reasonable amount of time in the daytime before I make any noise whatsoever. The, the, I have a drafter that I fired up, and when I did, I have a neighbor that has horses, and before I did that, the, to test the engine, I, I actually called her up, and she said, no problem, because I know, I didn't want to spook the animals and all that, and it turns out it was no problem at all, because I, I did it inside, and I had extra insulation put in that building just for that purpose, so that there was no noise outside of it. Other than that, uh, it's still a country atmosphere and all that, no. Uh, I don't have no junk that I know of, if I did, I'd have took it to the dump. The, anyhow, the, my bottom line is, the, I, I encourage any opposition whatsoever because if somebody's got a problem, well, it needs to be addressed. The, you can't just slap a mop because they live there, these people live out there also, not just me. And, we're not trying to disrupt the neighborhood, you know, the, I'm just trying to, uh, I'm just trying to retire with a small business because social security just ain't enough. We gotta make a few bucks somewhere, the, and the, the federal government ain't gonna pay my bills, and the cost of food nowadays, social security don't even cover that. That's my rent, we gotta do something else or we're not gonna eat. The, and I'm not trying to run a big business, I'm not even trying to grow. I've had all that in my life, I've had all I can stand. The, I just wanna run a little small business right here, and it's, it's more of a hobby than anything else. And, and, and we got a little internet gig going and all that, and, but it's still maturing, and uh, probably four or five years from now, you probably couldn't get me to turn a wrench, you know, I'm sixty-five right now, I'll be sixty-six here pretty soon, and when I hit seventy, hopefully I hit seventy, if I do, I'm done. Anyhow, the, I don't know what else there is to say, I guess it's, uh, it's up to the decision of everybody in this room. The you know, I, I don't wanna just have to just do this as a hobby, I'd like to make a few bucks at it, but the the anyhow, that's, that's what we got, I'm not much of a speaker, no, I don't get out much, so. That's all I got, I hope I didn't waste nobody's time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. At this point I'll declare the public hearing open. Now I'll call comments from other persons, either in favor or against, I do have call slips in front of me, or speakers formed, I should say. If I apologize up front if I butcher your last name. First item or first person wishing to speak is Clarence Purley, Purley? Okay, well, we'll set him down, we'll go somewhere else, how's that? Next one, and I'll know this one because I can't spell it, I can't read the reigning very well, Michael Manor, Manor, is that right? Remember? I'm gonna say okay yes to that.
I told my friend.
Uh, you did not put an address on here. Help me, man, Mr. Watkins, last name?
M U M something, okay.
Thank you, sir. You have five minutes, please state your full name and your address for the record, please, and as I said, you have five minutes.
My name is Michael Monroe, I live at four three six three South Natoma Trail, which is just off of Canada, I live at the intersection of Canada and Natoma Trail. And I hesitated to say that I was against this business because I've been in business myself, my wife and I were both motorcycle riders. And, I'm really, my problem is Canada, is speeding on Canada and noise. And, when I heard about this, I thought, is this gonna increase the problem? We have, the speed limit on Canada is twenty-five miles an hour. People drive anywhere from forty miles an hour on up. We've seen people going by, they must be doing sixty, seventy miles an hour when they go by. A lot of my neighbors are motorcycle people. And the one thing they do is they respect the speed limit, we have motorcycles, don't know where they come from or where they're going, but they don't, they don't respect the speed limit at all. We have some four-wheel, all-terrain vehicles that tear up and down Natoma and Canada. And it can be a dangerous situation, just pulling out of Natoma on the Canada, you gotta wait, see if you're gonna get T-boned by somebody. I've had people come flying by me after I pull out onto the road, and the noise, the noise levels. Some people apparently don't believe in mufflers, because we've have, some of the bikes and some of these ATVs are just a lot of noise. And, that was, that's our main concern. We came out here to be, we like, we enjoy the quiet. And and between the speeding and the noise, it's, we, we just thought that maybe this might make it worse. And that's what our concern was. As I said, I'm not concerned, I'm not opposed to people having a business, I've listened to this gentleman, Mr. Moffett, talk, and he seems like a, a good decent man, and, but I, I had to bring those concerns before the board.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that very much. And next we have Luann Fizzle. Frizzle, I probably pronounced that wrong too, I apologize. If you could, please, again, come up to the microphone, state your full name and your address.
My name is Louis, I'm Frizzle, I live at forty-three thirty-five South Ranch Road. We're right on the corner of Canada and Ranch, and I have several major concerns. Number one being the noise. We have a very nice, quiet neighborhood, and we really wanna see it stay that way. And, we know that motorcycles, ATVs, a lot of these small engine things create quite a ruckus, and we're very against that. Once again, like Mr. Monroe said, the speeding up and down, the, the traffic's just going to get worse and worse. And, and I'm not saying it'll get worse just because of this business, but something really needs to be done out there about that. The other thing is, we worked very hard to improve our property and to make it pleasing to the eye for people, you know, to, when they come by and see, I think we've done a very good job of it, have, so have a lot of our other neighbors. And I just see our property value going way downhill. If this business is put out there and it becomes busy, I think we're gonna have a lot of, of people out there that are, we just don't want there, and that's really it, that's, those are our concerns. But, so, I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, the next time I'm gonna ask for just simply, your first name is Robert. And I'm, it's, looks like a G R, okay. If you could please, again, state your full name and your address when you get to the microphone, I appreciate it, you do have five minutes.
My name is Robert Grippen, I live at eighty-six oh seven East American Dreamway. On a property directly east and adjacent to the applicant's property. Couple things I'd like to address straight up. According to Myra, I probably wish her her name, oh, they are going to be expanding their business, that's what we were told. They expect to be able to possibly build another facility, I don't know that that's true or not, could have just been hearsay. The property was rundown, the gentleman that lived on the property prior to these folks purchasing it is a retired movie actor in his eighties. Pretty crippled, he lived by himself with a crippled dog, so yes, the property was definitely rundown, and they have improved it, no doubt about that. As far as they're wanting to fix the road, we don't want it fixed, we like it the way it is, we like it rough because nobody uses it. My property is at the end of American Dreamway, literally my front gate is the end of the road. We don't have any traffic, except for Amazon deliveries and garbage truck, we like it that way, we like it quiet. Unfortunately, they like playing their music pretty loud, now, so far, I haven't been able to hear their motorcycles very much, very often, but my understanding is it does happen. The reason that we moved there in the first place was, number one, no traffic, nobody coming down our road, that's why we like to keep it rough that way. Yeah, it's rough, we drive on it very, very slowly. And the fact of the matter is, we like the quiet and the solitude of being out there and the privacy of having a facility, a property, that nobody really wants to bother us with drive-bys and noise and so forth, and that's apparently trying to change, and that's what we're, that's why we're primarily completely against them having a business there. If it was just a hobby thing, that would be probably a little bit different, we could address the noise issues and so forth with them, and they'd probably be compliant with that, but according to Myra, who did not come to the meeting, has told us that they expect to have vendors showing up and having facilities for, for that. That's not what he just said, that, that's not what the applicant addressed, he was talking about being just a small one-man operation, if you give him this use permit, then he opens, that opens the door for him to expand that business any way he wants to, and we're diametrically If you give him this use permit, then he opens, that opens the door for him to expand that business any way he wants to, and we're diametrically, and I believe every one of our neighbors agrees with this, diametrically opposed to that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Next, uh, person to speak is Melissa Hurley. Did I get that one right? Oh, absolutely. Bring your notes. Come on up, state your full name, give us your address, and you have five minutes.
Melissa Hurley.
And you can pull that down if it's more convenient. It does flex.
Melissa Hurley, eighty-five fifty-five East Canada Drive. I live south of the, uh, business. I think my biggest concern so far has been the noise. I've been out in my garden. I have heard engines racing, and it's, I haven't heard it all the time, but yes, I've heard it. I've heard loud noises.
Ma'am, please address us. Talk to, talk to us.
Yes, sir. Anyway, as I was stating, I was in my garden. I heard loud, uh, engines racing. I thought it was my neighbor Kevin, who lives directly to the north of me. It was not him. It was the business. Also, I have heard loud music when I'm in my garden, and I don't need to hear thump, 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 some bass music going on while I'm out there trying to do my thing. Between the noise, as, as every, I'm probably gonna sound like everyone else that has spoken, it's the noise. We're concerned about that. We're concerned about the traffic. We're concerned about, I am concerned about, okay, you've got all these strange people coming into the neighborhood. That opens up the possibility for crime. That's all I'm gonna say. I won't say it's gonna happen. I'll just say, you've got strangers entering your neighborhood. We've discussed the property values. Who wants to live next to a commercial business? I've been out here over twenty years, and I, the reason I am out there is because it's, it relatively peaceful. It's the kind of lifestyle I want. I too live on a dirt road. I get it. I don't want crowds. I don't want loud noise. I don't want strange people around. I don't, I, I think I've hit about what everybody else has said. I'm just echoing their concerns. Their concerns are also my concerns. I've, I've been on the website for this business, and of course, I see the motorcycles. You can see the motorcycles, uh, in the picture in the shop. I've been told there's a, a race car or a dragster or something's already out in the front yard. This is a commercial-type business. I did a little research. It was in a commercial zone when, when it was in Hurst, Texas. To me, this type of business needs to remain in a commercial zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next audio, or next person is, uh, Kevin Quint. Did I get that right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. You could please pull name and address and speak into the microphone. And you do have five minutes.
Oh, I don't know if I could do this in five minutes. My name's, my name-
I asked you to do it in five minutes, so try to sum it up.
Yep. My name is Kevin Quint. I live at eight, five, five, zero, East American Dreamway, directly across from these people. It has been a, a very bad experience for me. They moved in there. They put a sister in there. First thing did was went out and bought big dogs that grew into big dogs, barking continuously. No training. They're still barking today. I've been harassed. I've been accused, false police reports from these people, this woman. And, uh, we've got that resolved finally in February, that I had done nothing. It's, I've been harassed. Now, this brother's moved in from Texas. I have to listen to music blaring every damn day. The, uh, uh, air compressor's running whenever, grinders. Uh, they were playing their music here recently, last two weeks ago, not within the last two weeks. And I heard his wife say, hey, the music's too loud. And that's when I got to hear, fuck the neighbor. This is not a good experience for me. I moved out there because it's zoned R four. I never expected anybody to bring the city to me. I am dead-set against this. I am very angry. I have done nothing to harm these people. I haven't reported them for noise or anything. That's upon my legal advice. It's like the road out there. I don't want that road touched. That road will cost over fifty thousand dollars to actually fix. I've been in construction my whole life, recently retired. What's been going on there is a travesty. I moved out there for quiet and solitude and seclusion for my own peace of mind. Let me ask you one question. Would you want this across the street from yourselves? This is not a good experience for me, and it's just gonna get worse if you, uh, if you allow this. Because, because like I said, the music's blaring. I'm at my wit's end. It's caused me more problems with the stress and stuff, and my, uh, my, uh, cardiologist, both of them will tell you that, the stress, i- it just, it's not good. And I just got out of the hospital again yesterday. I'm supposed to be at home for bedrest, and I gotta come down here and, and try to fight this. But if you guys pass this, that will be a slap not only in my face, but all of my neighbors and everybody that lives out in the country because, because they move out in the country for very specific reasons, peace and quiet. Property values. I talked to my real estate friends. They told me I could, if this goes through, I could expect, when I sell my place, if I decide to sell it, to lose up to fifty percent of my value due to, who wants to move out in a rural area across from a motorcycle shop? And it's not just the motorcycle shop. They were, they were giving cards out at the car shows. He works on motors, high-performance motors. You know, cars, motorcycles. I don't know how familiar you are with motorcycles. I am very familiar. Drew up with them, uh, have had many motorcycles, still have motorcycles. But when you start getting a high-performance Harley-Davidson, or Indian, or After-Tac, Rev-Tec, SS, whatever, you start looking at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty-inch motors with the exhaust tuned, the exhaust get pretty loud. Car receiving more so. But I want you, I want you to look at it from your, from a perspective, would you want this where you live? Because I'm gonna tell you right now, it sucks. This is not what I ever expected, and I expect not to have this across the street. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And you did that in ten minutes, or five minutes. Fantastic. All right, we have one last speakers form here. Uh, Clarence Hurley, I do believe, sir. You could please come up, state your full name and your current address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Clarence Hurley, eighty-five fifty-five East Canada Drive. Um, most of my issue, my concerns have been addressed. I would have one other little, uh, input. At the corner of Ranch and Canada, there is a bus stop where kids are picked up and, and dropped off many times a day, and there's a lot of little kids. That traffic is, that's just a, it's just only a matter of time. Even without the business, it's a problem, but I foresee if we have people, because like other folks have said, the traffic goes really faster there. It's only gonna get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Moffett, you do have an opportunity for rebuttal, and if you would like to use it, please come to the microphone. You have five minutes.
Well, it seems like, uh, the main issue is like, uh, the, the traffic. The, as far as the traffic goes, the, well, no, let's start off right here. The business expanding. The, this business is not going to expand past that building right there. Period. That just ain't gonna happen. I mean, I'm, I'm retiring. I'm not expanding. I'm downsizing. We came from ten thousand square feet down to one thousand five hundred. Uh, with, and I don't park stuff outside. The, it, it just don't happen. Now, I just wanna do little onesie-twosie type stuff, and that's as far as I wanna go. The, the traffic part, the, I, I probably get about three visitors a week. The, I mean, that's it. The, nobody's, uh, we don't work on dirt bikes, loud dirt bike, don't do any ATVs or nothing like that. The, uh, the motorcycles that have come to me so far have come on trailers, and they leave on trailers. The, they, they can't ride them down that road anyhow from the, uh, you gotta have a pretty good bike or be a pretty good rider to get down that road. I mean, you, you, it's, it's, it's fairly dangerous. The, I have ten or eleven of my own motorcycles that, uh, business or no business, I still own them, and they're all registered. Uh, I ride them all I want, but, uh, I don't. The, those days are done. I just like having them now. I just, maybe once a week, you might see me ride off, but I mean, not until next spring because I'm fair weather. The, uh, property value, the, that's just ludicrous. The, uh, property values have gone up all through history. I've never seen them drop. If they did, I'd buy it all, but the, the, I think what we're doing isn't dropping anybody's property value, the, the, that, that, that I know of, uh, it may raise the property value. The, we're not running a, uh, so to speak, big commercial business. It's just a small hobby that we make a few bucks at. That's it. Uh, and if we gotta take our signs down and, uh, just do it as a hobby, well, there you have it, you know, the, I don't have to make money out of it. I've got my online thing going and all that, the, the, I'm just trying to do everything legitimately. Ever since we, before I even came out here, we got the correct permits and everything to do the building. I wanted to do everything on the level. The, the difference is, uh, we do pay taxes. I'd like to see this county get them for our proceeds and what have you. The, I guess if we're not, if we're doing it as a hobby, but I don't want to lose this, our city and our county and the, nothing else changes. The, I really don't understand where all this, this stemmed from. I understood there was problems in the neighborhood before I moved out here. My sister was on medication, or actually, she was on the wrong medication, and her and one of my neighbors had some problems, and the, it didn't have anything to do with me, other than I allowed her to live in my house. And since then, uh, we sent her to the doctors and got her fixed. The, I, I believe that was all resolved. The, and I really felt sorry for that neighbor because my sister was off her rocker there for a little bit. And she was driving me nuts, and I was a thousand miles from here. The, I fixed it as fast as I could. That could happen anywhere, regardless of this or that, a business or anything. Uh, that just happened. There, there seems to be no fixing it, but I'm open for a resolve if there is one on any of these issues. The, the, I, I don't believe we have a, I, we don't make any noise at night that I know of, except for, uh, I might fire up my smoker and cook something to eat, but the, uh, the doors on that shop right there, the, I mean, there ain't nothing happening there after five o'clock in the afternoon at all. I, I don't work that late, period. The,
All right, so that's your five minutes. Thank you. Appreciate it. At this point, I declare person online, uh, requesting to speak right before this. It's up to you whether you want to. Sure, why not? Well, Mr. Cockworth, your handwriting is bad as night. We do have one individual that'd like to speak online on behalf of this item. Uh, Deborah Chatham, did I pronounce that right? Are you?
Yes, sir, did. Yes, can you?
I am. Uh, you do have five minutes. I'd like for you to state your full name and your current address.
Okay, thank you so much for letting me get in late here. Um, my name is Deborah Chatham, and I live at seventy-eight thirty-five East Canada Drive. I'm asking you to vote no on docket SU twenty-two dash twenty-four. My primary concern about approving this special use permit is that it is setting the applicant up for failure. Their Facebook page, CNC Racing Engines, also known as War Performance, advertises they work on racing engines and general automotive repair. They can't test racing engines on residential roads, which are posted twenty-five miles per hour. If they do that or make any noise or smells inherent to an engine repair business, they will be violating Arizona State Statute thirteen dash twenty-nine seventeen, section A two. Based on current circumstances and past behavior, I am very concerned about the priority the applicants place on laws, codes, customer safety, safety, and the neighborhood. Another concern is the added burden of traffic this will create. Their most recent road, North Canada Drive, is in the position to support more traffic. Canada Drive is the road customers would have to use to get this proposed business. It's an aging road. It's narrower than the others in the area, has no sidewalks, shoulders, or road markings, but being paved, and the only available leasing surface during much of the year is heavily used by both motor vehicle traffic and the people walking dogs, jogging, and riding bikes. I would ask you to consider how fair it would be that, for the sake of one person, all the rest of the community will have their investments, hopes, and dreams destroyed. I've lived in my home on Canada for forty years. I enjoy many outdoor activities on my property, as do most in the neighborhood. How could we possibly enjoy our homes, living next to a business of this kind, with this necessary traffic, smells, and noise? They have the option of doing business somewhere zone for businesses, or creating an appropriate business for this rural, rural residential area that doesn't infringe on the rights of others. The rest of us have the option of buying property in a rural area zone for single-family homes, so we can have a quiet lifestyle. We took that option and created a pleasant, quiet community. Please don't take that away from us. That concludes my comments, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. And I'm gonna call at this point, call for discussion amongst the commission. You can ask questions of the applicant, and you may ask questions of staff at the same well, same time. If you're asked, Mr. Moffett, to answer a question, team will ask you to come back to the podium so we can capture your, uh, answer on in the minutes for the microphone. Commission, I'm asking, I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Young. I'm gonna put you on the spot, but I don't wanna forget you. Do you have any questions or concerns on this matter that you wanna discuss?
I do have a question for Mr. Moffett. Uh, how many vehicles will be parked there at one time? I just know some, some of the shops around my area looks like they become junkyards after a short time.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Young, hang on just, just a second. Let me have him come back up to the podium, Mr. Moffett, please. If you could, please come back up to the podium and answer Mr. Young's questions. And did you hear the question, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
The, number one, we, we won't have any vehicles parked outside, other than the ones that I own personally, you know, which are, uh, registered vehicles. I mean, I, I don't work on cars at all, and the, I ain't gonna work on nobody's tractor. I ain't gonna allow anybody to park it on my property. The, uh, I do have some tractors, and I have, uh, uh, a few pickup trucks that, uh, that we drive. And, uh, and I, and I have one, uh, antique vehicle that, uh, it's running and registered, and I drive it too, but other, other than that, none. The, we don't store anything for anybody or nothing like that, though.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Mr. Young, do you have any further questions?
No, sir.
You, um, Mr. Moffett, if you wanna just hang for a second, I'll go real quickly with the rest of the staffs here. Yeah, uh, Mr. Montgomery, you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, do. Uh, focused primarily right now on noise. And I will say, uh, as a forty-some-year resident of very local Cochise County, I too like it because of the rural nature, the quiet, the peace, and the beauty of it. But I have also been inflicted by noise from inconsiderate neighbors and others visiting, and some of those will be dogs, uncontrolled barking twenty-four hours a day. I've had myself get, um, sheriff's office and the animal control people involved, um, just for sanity's sake. Now, fortunately, they were able to do that. Now, fortunately, they were able to do that, but I do not have much patience for people who have uncontrolled, undisciplined dogs that never stop barking. So that would, that would be a problem and that would be a strike, I think. Um, I, I hope that, uh, I hope that could be addressed. But, and I, I ha- I have to ask, is some of the comments from somebody else, what I, what I noticed in, um, an open defiance of concern for dogs and music. And, uh, some profanity was used to describe that. I've also been victim of that. And, uh, if you know what the bass sound, you can hear it blocks away, but any, any other music? Sunday mornings in this county are the most beautiful peaceful times on earth, I believe. But when you can hear a mile away bumping music, or you got kids racing up and down the street on their quads in their dirt bikes, having no respect for the residents of that community who've been there for ages, by the way, uh, that is a problem. There are noy- noise ordinances. And, um, having had to call on those with the sheriff's office in the past, I've learned that basically if, if you are a resident, a neighbor, and you can hear objectionable music or noise, it's too loud. You're required to turn it down to their level of satisfaction. And, um, I've had that enforced, I've had to. And, uh, I don't know if any of the other folks have researched that, but you should. And, uh, for someone to just say, "At, at, at you, I've got my music up and too bad if you don't like it," that, that's not gonna work with me. So, um, I hope that, uh, if that is the status of things today, that it can be worked out. But if it isn't, um, I would not inflict that on other people. Mr. Chairman, am I staying in bounds on this?
So far you are. I'm looking for the questions I was waiting for. I was having a gentleman stand up here waiting for the questions.
I think also, um, in other businesses, there used to be something a few years ago called a hobby status where you weren't in full-blown business. But if you performed at a level considered hobby, you could do it. It is, am I, uh?
I'm unaware of quote-unquote hobby as, as far as zoning regulations concern. Staff, can you correct me on that? I don't know, I don't know that aspect.
Okay, we have a home occupation permit. Uh, this is, this is one step above, this is a special use permit, this is for a non-residential use.
Yeah, this is non-residential, so hobby doesn't necessarily apply to that.
Okay. Um, as, as for traffic, I can see that it is a problem. And as you know, anybody living in rural Cochise County on dirt roads, it only takes one little dirt bike to stir up clouds of dirt that will bury your house. Again, it goes to respect, respect of your neighbors and your community. And when there isn't any, something else has to be done. Uh, so I am concerned about all this, but I do, as a businessman, would love to see you in business and have, have a, a very happy time doing what you enjoy doing in this world. Um, but there, there's conflict here. And I'd rather that there weren't.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, I appreciate that. Mr. Saunders, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I, I do. What, uh, what's your, um, definition of small engine repair?
We work on Harley-Davidsons.
Well, in, in your concept plan, you're saying vehicles with two axles, recreational vehicles and other small engines that may include incidental retail sales. You kind of alluded earlier that you were just gonna work inside the building.
Inside the building, we work on one brand of motorcycle only. We don't work on dirt bikes or nothing, other, other ATBs or nothing, we only work on Harley-Davidsons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I do have a question for you, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I think what, uh, Commissioner Saunders was referring to is probably our definition. Uh, because our definition of small, uh, engine repairs talks about cars, automotive and RVs, but I will default that to Christine. But that sounded more like our definition and not necessarily, uh, what the application stated.
They, that's correct. There are two definitions, one of them is small engine, one of them is large engines. And they do use what's, what's in the application or in your, your memo tells us what, that's what we define as small engine, two axes or less.
That's correct. And if he just wants to repair Harley-Davidsons, that's fine.
Still two axes, small engine. So they're really, once you get past that, you gotta go to the large engine definition, that's what the definition is. Um, question for you, uh, Mr. Moffett. Two thousand twenty-two, you got a residential, excuse me, yes, residential opt-out permit for a fifteen-hundred square foot metal accessory structure. Is that the building room speaking of?
Yes, it is.
And you understood when you got that residential opt-out permit, that building was for residential, correct?
Uh, I just remember buying the permit, that was it, the.
Yeah, so you, you do understand, you, you recognize.
It was for my residence, yes.
You, you got a permit, but it wasn't a full-blown permit and it was for residential opt-out?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Watkins, do you have any questions?
Yeah, you only work on Harleys. Um, do you road test these?
No, I don't.
So how do they know where they're running or not? You do, you test them in the shop?
Uh, I, I run them in the shop and I do good work. The, the, when, when, when they pick it up, they're done. I, I don't road test bikes because, uh, I don't like riding other people's motorcycles, number one, they cost too much. The, uh, the, the, the newer ones and stuff that are computerized and stuff, I don't work on at all. I just work on older ones, you know, more, more vintage type, type bikes. And, uh, when, when you start them up, they're done, that's it. The, I haven't road tested a, a bike yet. They take them and they leave and they're happy. That's it. Uh,
A follow-up, um, when you fire them up to test them, every Harley I've been around my whole life is loud. Are, are, is your shop door open? You know, can the neighbors hear that thing revving?
They might be able to hear them, you know, the, like I said, I, I did put real heavy insulation in my shop, you know, just, just for that reason. And, uh, yeah, I really don't fire them up very often. The, maybe once a day, the, now, every now and then I'll go start up my bikes for a few minutes each, the, just, just because I don't ride them and I'd wanna run some gas through them. But as far as the bikes that I'm working on, the, a couple of times a week, I guess, the, I mean, it's, it's not like a, 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 a all-day-long type of thing where you're starting and revving motorcycles and stuff like that. The, and, and I understand that, uh, people are concerned, why do you approve this and, uh, while now you just green light to rev motorcycle? Nah, I do have respect for my neighbors. The, and, and I'm aware of my music, uh, would, uh, you can probably hear it from across the street, which, no, no big deal. I can, I can turn that down. I, I just didn't, I didn't think anybody could hear it, actually.
Uh, okay, sir, we're, we're done with that question. Mr. Watkins, can you, you have any further? All right, Ms., Ms. Dupu, do you have any questions for the applicant, please?
Yes, I noticed that you mentioned in the application signage. Are you gonna put a sign out somewhere?
Uh, I have one on my door, it's, I don't know exact dimensions.
Like that picture?
That's it, right there.
But I was thinking separate standalone signs, are you planning on putting any of that out?
Uh, I, I don't know where I'd put it, the, or, or why, but if they drive down that road, they already know I'm there.
That's what I was thinking, so no sign would be a good thing. It would, would decrease the traffic, the uninvited traffic would.
It's a dead-end road, nobody's gonna come down there, you know, the.
What is your idea of improving the road? You said you've spoken with the contractor, what condition do you hope to achieve?
Uh, just making it smoother. It's the, uh, bringing the grader in and smoothing out the top of the road. It's, it's extremely rough, it's like a riverbed, it's, it's all rock. And, uh, the, the only one that goes fast down that road that I know of is the, the garbage truck and the propane guy. The, 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 other than that, the, uh, none of us drive fast, none of my neighbors drive fast. Uh, we don't, uh, uh, it'd be a suicide mission, I'd wreck my truck. The, the, I think about five miles an hour or less is about the average on our road.
So the point is not to make it motorcycle friendly?
No.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Automotive friendly for my vehicle because I go to the store.
I, I drove out there, it's bad.
It's bad.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Marsky, do you have any questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Moffett, you may sit down.
Thank you.
Uh, we kind of went around this a little differently than we've done in the past. Do we have any questions for staff? That's the commission, do we have any commission? Does the commission have any questions for Ms. McGlaughlin? Mr. Young, I'm gonna put you on spot first.
No.
Very much, anybody else have questions for staff?
One really quick question.
Yes, Mr. Montgomery.
Back to the map, um, with the property coming off of, uh, Kanada.
Kanada.
Um, I said that's a property line, but is there a street to get into the backside of that property? Or does it have to use Ranch Road?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I was bringing up the map.
Because let me see if I can help with that question. You're asking, if you get down Kanada, if you go past Ranch to the east, is there way back in the backside of the answer?
Well, it's actually more directly to the east of the property, that property line, is that some kind of a driveway there or can I get in from, from the east side?
No, there's no way to get into there, those are, there's no, there's no road that's identified, let's put it that way.
Thank you very much.
I didn't mean to step on your toes.
Nope.
Um, no more than questions. All right, in that place, that place, Ms. McGlaughlin, if you could, please give us your summary and recommendation.
Staff recommends conditional approval. If the commission chooses to approve the request, staff recommends the following conditions. Number one, applicant will be required to enter into a private maintenance agreement for American Dreamway, since that's a private road. Number two, any fuels or other flammable material related to the repair shop shall be stored in containers meeting national fire protection standards. Number three, all waste fuels, oils or other potentially hazardous materials shall be disposed of per manufacturer's, manufacturers' guidelines or industry standards. No oil or solvents shall be discharged into the onsite septic system. Uh, these conditions relate to environmental and hazardous, uh, material concerns. Number four, all activity associated with the special use shall only occur during the time stated on the application, Monday through Friday, nine to five. And all small engine repairs shall occur inside the designated metal, metal building. Uh, these two conditions relate to neighborhood concerns about noise and commercial activity on the site. Um, are other standard conditions related to acceptance of conditions permitting and modifications still apply and have not been modified? That concludes my presentation. I'm available for additional questions and I've included a sample motion on the screen.
Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. Excuse me, uh, is there any current, further questions for Ms. McGlaughlin? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion, please, call for the.
Chairman?
Mr. Marskey?
I move that we approve docket SU twenty-two twenty-four War Performance with conditions of approval recommended by staff. Factors of approval is constitute to findings in fact.
Thank you, Mr. Marskey, do you have a second?
I will second.
Second, my Ms. Dupu, thank you very much. This point, uh, any further discussion on the motion? I'm gonna say one thing then, since no one else spoke up. And, uh, this is not a derogatory statement towards Mr. Moffett or the applicant, whosoever. It is a derogatory statement of what's wrong with our opt-out system. Here's an individual that went to the county, wanted to build a fifteen-hundred square foot metal building. I don't know how he found out about the opt-out, not gonna accuse anybody of anything, but it's residential. It's designed to be residential, it's not designed to house a building or a business at a later date. For that reason, primarily, plus concerns of the neighbors, I will be voting no on this. If primarily, county needs to address the residential opt-out with some teeth so that we don't end up in this situation again. This point I'll call for the question. Mr. Dupu, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregan votes nay. Mr. Montgomery?
Nay.
Mr. Gonzalez, um, excuse me, Mr. Watkins?
Nay.
Mr. Young?
Nay.
Mr. Marskey?
Nay.
Mr. Saunders?
Nay.
Thank you. That is one, two, three, four, five, six, one. As special use has been failed by us. Mr. Moffett, you have the right to appeal this to the board of supervisors. If you choose to take that right, you need to make an application to repeal within fifteen days. You can find that information either online or here during the county during business hours. Uh, at that point, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you very much for all your time and patience on this. Next item is, hey, thank you, sir, have a good evening. Docket R two-two dash zero-three, you wanna stick around, it gets more fun. Docket R two-two dash zero-three Wind Energy Power Plants. This is a staff-initiated amendment to the Cochise County zoning regulations, Article eighteen, site development standards. And this is carried over from last month. Uh, make sure I got the right one here. Ms. McGlaughlin, you're up to bat on this one, please. Second for the room to clear.
And, and just to remind the commission, if you could remove it from the table first, since it was tabled from the previous meeting.
All right, help me, help me.
You basically need a motion to remove the docket item R twenty-two zero-three.
Okay.
Basically.
That motion's been made by Mr. Watkins. Do I have a second on that motion to remove this item off the table?
Second.
By, Mr. Young. Apologize. In that case, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Dupu, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregan votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Zoy.
Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Marskey?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And that is unanimous, so it is no longer on the table. And now, Ms. McGlaughlin, if you'd be nice enough, and I'll get that right on the next one.
Thank you. Good evening, this is a staff-initiated proposed text amendment to section eight twenty-two of the zoning regulations. Section eighteen twenty-two regulates development standards for wind energy power plants or WEPs, which are non-residential utility-scale wind energy systems which supply electricity to off-site consumers. These are big wind turbine projects. The photo on this slide is from the Red Horse Project west of Wilcox and was approved in twenty thirteen at this, by this commission. Um, I'm just providing this as an example, there is not a current project that is, um, up for the commission at this time, this is simply a text amendment. Uh, WEPs are not allowed by right in any zoning district, they're allowed by special use and rule, general business and industry zoning designations. All WEPs must receive approval from this commission as well as comply with the zoning, uh, requirements in section eighteen twenty-two. Uh, this is the location of the Red Horse Project. It was permitted for up to twenty-eight turbines, each of which are four hundred and seventy-five feet in height. Uh, this is one of only a handful of wind projects in Arizona. Our current regulations address setback, noise, lighting and signage for WEPs, and there is a height exception. The intent of this amendment is to update, add additional best management practices and better guide transfer and project end-of-life requirements, specifically shifting the burden of decommissioning liability and site restoration to the WEP owner. Uh, one of our best sources of project-specific information are studies provided by the applicant at application submittal. Currently, we state that soil drainage report, environmental assessments, visual analysis, impact studies and/or, uh, cultural resource studies may be required. We recommend adding shadow flicker analysis, electromagnetic analysis and migratory bird-bat studies. We can use these to develop better, more targeted conditions that lessen impacts for a very specific area and project. We also recommend adding a few uses to the setback, uh, requirements, bearing transmission lines also recommended our additional safety provisions. The lifespan of a typical WEP project is about twenty years. These structures are made to withstand very tough conditions such as sustained These structures are made to withstand very tough conditions, such as sustained hurricane-force wind. As a result, they're tough to recycle or even crush, and currently, there's only a small handful of landfills in the U.S. that are able to accept them. With the proposed amendments, we're attempting to further shift the cost burden of decommissioning and site restoration from the county to the WEP landowner. Uh, as the commission is aware, this item was tabled from the November ninth, uh, twenty-twenty-two meeting to tonight, to provide additional time for the commission to review and for staff to respond to comments. During the November ninth meeting, there was discussion regarding several sections of the proposed amendments. Since that meeting, staff received additional comments from two of the commissioners, and there was a lot of really good suggestions, which I tried to address, if not directly incorporate into this revision. Section five of the staff memo details some of the key changes between the two drafts. And this concludes my presentation, which, in this case, serves as both staff and applicant presentation. This is scheduled to be heard, uh, by the board on January tenth. And with that, I'm available for questions, and there's a sample motion on the slide.
We get to read through the rest of this, otherwise it yells at me. Thank you very much, Ms. McGlaughlin. At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open. Comments from other persons? There is nobody in the room sitting but the commission and staff, so therefore, I will declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I'll call for commission discussion. Do we have any comments or concerns, or any other additional input on this particular project for staff? Mr. Young, I'll start with you.
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Anybody?
Okay, since you insist.
Well, I, if you weren't going to go, I was going to go, so one of us is still going to go, so.
Only to mention that this is not really a specific project that anybody's proposing. It is a generic proposal to approve something that may happen later.
It's the criteria that we're going to use in the zoning regulations, so whenever somebody arrives and wants to build a wind project, this is what we're going to use for the criteria.
Thank you.
A general statement, yes. My only question for you, Ms. McGlaughlin, and I do appreciate you taking the time to go through this. Um, on eighteen-twenty-two-dash-zero-eight, cost estimates shall be obtained, updated, excuse me, uh, at no more than five-year increments. My only, my only question, and it is more clarification, where everywhere else in that paragraph, it says the owner-operator shall be responsible for it. It, and it somewhat implies that the owner-operator would be responsible for this as well, as well as the cost. Is that something that we should be more specific in, or should we just be a little generic in that sense?
Uh, I, I think it's, uh.
I'm sure you did, you wrote it.
I think it's implied. Uh, I think, yeah, everything is to be borne by the owner-operator.
I, I'm sure that was the case. It's just lawyers in the world today and know how that works. Okay, that's the only comment I have. And again, thank you for your taking, uh, the opportunity to listen to my concerns, at least. At this point, I'll, let's see, um, close that commission call for that's done. Um, I'm assuming you have, uh, nothing further to add to this as far as recommendations? Ms. McGlaughlin, thank you.
Not at this time.
At this point, I will call for a motion, call for the motion, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms., Mr. Pew.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of docket R twenty-two zero-three, amendments to Article eighteen of the Cochise County zoning regulations as outlined in Exhibit A.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Watkins is a second. Just want to call for the vote. Uh, Mr. Pew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregan votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Marske?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Very much, this is unanimous. Uh, this item is forwarded to the board supervisor for the recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this should attend the board supervisor's meeting dealing with the docket. Dealing with this docket, I should say. Okay, go to the next one real quickly. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to remove item, I should say, docket number R-dash-two-two-dash-zero-four, solar energy project, or solar energy power project from the table. May I have a motion for that, please?
Some move.
Mr. Watkins is moved. I have a second for that, please.
Second.
Mr. Saunders is a second. Uh, Mr. Pew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pay attention here. Mr. Gregan votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Watkins? Mr. Young?
Aye.
Pew, Mr. Marske?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will, this is staff-initiated amendment to the Cochise County zoning regulations, Article eighteen, site development standards. Uh, Ms. McGlaughlin, you're up.
Good evening. Next is the staff-initiated proposed, uh, proposed tax amendment to section eighteen-twenty-four of the zoning regulations. Section eighteen-twenty-four regulates development standards for solar energy power plants, or SEPs, which are non-residential utility-scale solar energy systems, which supply electricity to off-site consumers. These are the big solar farm projects. Uh, the photo on this slide is from the AppCo project, which is on two hundred acres south of the Wilcox Playa. That was approved in twenty-sixteen. SEPs are allowed by right and industry designations. They are allowed by special use and rule in general business, uh, zoning districts. They are most often, if not all, located in rural zoning, including the AppCo project. However, the fact that some are permitted by right is significant, because potentially, there would be no additional conditions attached by special use. And section eighteen-twenty-four would dictate nearly all requirements. All SEPs must comply with zoning requirements in section eighteen-twenty-four, which we're about to discuss. We have several examples of SEPs in Cochise County. The ones in red have been constructed. The ones in green have received their entitlements, uh, largely through this process. Um, the newest being the one in Alfreda, which is in permitting right now. We don't have a lot in our current regulations. Really, it's just a setback requirement, which is not being modified by this amendment. The intent of this amendment is to update, add additional best management practices, and better guide transfer and project end-of-life requirements, specifically shifting the burden of decommissioning liability and site restoration to the SEP owner. SEPs require a lot of acreage. Most utility-scale solar energy systems require at least twenty acres to reduce five megawatts. All local power providers are considering ways to include more renewable energy in their portfolio, especially solar. We recommend mandating perennial vegetated, vegetated, uh, ground cover, bearing transmission lines, onsite only, and wa- and friendly fencing. Uh, we want this use to work better with the environment. The lifespan of a typical SEP project is about thirty to forty years. The equipment used is pretty costly, tends to retain its value, and components can be more easily recycled than wind system components. But as I just mentioned, each of these projects can be hundreds of acres, and restoring the site can also be very expensive. With the proposed amendments, we're attempting to shift the cost burden from, of the decommissioning and site restoration to the SEP landowner. This concludes my presentation, which, and again, in this case, serves as both staff and applicant presentation. As was the case in the previous docket, this item was also tabled from the November meeting. Similarly, section four of the staff memo documents, key changes, uh, resulting from commission feedback since the prior meeting. This is scheduled to be heard before the board on January tenth, and I'm available for questions, and there's a sample motion on the slide.
Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. At this point, I'll declare the hearing, public hearing, open. Ask for comments from others. Again, no one is in the room but the commission and staff. Therefore, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Uh, at this point, does the commission have any questions for Ms. McGlaughlin? Mr. Young?
No.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Ms. McGlaughlin? I have one. Mr. Watkins?
What's the definition of wildlife-friendly fencing? I looked on Exhibit A, and I see the one with the, the hole. And to me, that is, it just invites vandalism.
There is, we, we left it, again, somewhat open. Uh, in the Alfreda project, what they've chosen to do is elevate it about six inches off the ground, not including the posts. Uh, just so, it, it doesn't invite large animals like deer, but the smaller animals and reptiles are allowed to, to go through, and it doesn't disrupt their habitat, because these are hundreds of acres. Um, and it, it can, it can disrupt habitats, and, and we get a lot of comments when we send it to fish and wildlife. So, that's one of the comments they always make to incorporate wildlife, uh, friendly fencing. We've left it open. Uh, they, they give us some suggestions. Um, and so if there is a suggestion that's specific to a site from fish and wildlife, that's probably what we'd recommend for the applicant.
Well, this is very close to fish and wildlife's progress.
That's my. Thanks, sir. Is there any, are there any other questions for Ms. McGlaughlin?
I have a question.
Mr. Marske?
Mandating the transmission line burial. Is there any negotiation and what is considered your transmission line? Uh, as far as KV goes, sixty-nine is normally the minimum they go down as considered transmission. And it's extremely expensive to bury transmission lines. That's why you see most transmission lines still overhead. The cost of burial is enormous. You're paying over a million to put him up a mile of, of overhead transmission line, and you'd go ten times that to bury it. It's almost making it impossible if you're going to have any amount of transmission line.
Well, in my recollection, and I'm going to step over here real quickly, when they, when we, the Red Horse Project up there to the north, the second phase of it, the first phase, they put it above ground. The second phase, the post was concerned about the electromagnetic interference that they got in their testing range, and that's, every time we go and talk about something, it ends up saying, well, there's too much interference from that, so therefore, they make them buried. They buried that last section, that second phase up there. They buried it from the site down to the substation. God knows how the hell they afforded it, I have no idea. And I don't know what the size, I don't know what the size was they were pushing out, but the second two-hundred acres.
That's what I'm, I'm saying, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and we have exempted from point of interconnection, what you're talking about, to the system itself, that can be overhead. Obviously, if it is possible, we would prefer it to be underground, as it was in Red Horse. But, um, again, we, we do realize it's expensive, and we would allow, just from point of interconnection, to the system itself to be overhead. But onsite, it would need to be underground, to the maximum extent possible.
To like Alfreda, they're building a substation.
Correct. Yeah, so there's just, there, everything's going to be, they can essentially bury what's, what's the smallest stuff, the panel position to the substation, okay. Um, any other questions?
I just have one, and it doesn't really pertain to this, but of the, the four approved ones, I only know of one that's under construction. That's the Alfred, well, you call it Alfreda, I call it McNeil. Um, but are the, are there any of the other three slated to start?
They have their entitlements, they're just not currently, currently, and, and a lot of it has to do with the utility. SSVC had a real need, uh, right now, and they had to reconstruct their substation, so that's been the one that has, um, just been fast-tracked, and it's, it's coming online very soon.
I live on that substation, I understand. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will call for the motion. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Watkins? I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of docket R twenty-two oh-four, amendments to Article eighteen of the Cochise County zoning regulations as outlined in Exhibit A. And a second? Yeah, second that, please. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. When I'll call, roll call, Mr. Pew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregan votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Pew, Mr. Marske?
Aye.
Saunders?
Aye.
Unanimous, this item will be forwarded to the board supervisor for the recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with it should attend the board supervisor's meeting, dealing with this dock. Okay, let's move on to item six here, planning agenda report, including pending, recent, future agenda items, and board supervisor actions.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Merry Christmas, Happy. Thank you once again for your service. I think we met pretty much every month this year. Maybe we missed one, I can't remember, early in the year.
I think so, if we're going around.
So, we've, our docket load is fairly consistent. We've got four more dockets next month, two downzonings, another guest lodging, and then a communication tower. That meeting's on January eleventh. Um, the department has hired a, another planner. Her name is Susan. Um, you'll probably see her next month. She's primarily focused on commercial permit activity, but on occasion, you'll see her presenting special use permits as well to you. Uh, Mr. Gregan, this is your last meeting. Um, the county greatly appreciates your volunteering. Um, I think you've done a great job as a chair.
Thank you.
You run very good meetings, um, and you, we, we will miss you, but we also wish you luck in your.
You won't miss me.
In Denver's.
Trust me, I know you won't miss me.
You're right, we won't miss you.
That's right, there you go. Be honest about it.
Um, and that's all I have. Robert, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Gregan, for everything you've done for the commission.
You're welcome, Mr. Kersman. Um, at that point, I'll call for commission on recent matters. Anybody have anything to say? Mr. Young?
I want to reiterate, Mr. Gregan, I haven't met you personally, but you run a great meeting, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. At this point, I'll adjourn. Merry Christmas, everybody, and a happy new year.